Meeting to order, we can. Let's see, I forgot to ask these folks ahead of time. But we're gonna have an opening prayer by Tim if he's willing. So we're gonna, I mixed this up because usually we do the pledge and then a prayer. But when Dave Jay and I went down to the legislature, we learned that sometimes we like to do them the other way. It's, you know, God before country. So we're gonna have a prayer by Tim and the pledge will be led by Boyd.
Our Father in heaven, as we join together as citizens and community leaders this evening, we pray for thy guidance and direction, that we may be able to consider the needs of the city and the citizens here and that we may be able to make deliberations and decisions that will be appropriate and benefit. We are grateful for this community we live in. We are grateful for the freedoms and the things that we are able to do as citizens in our city. We ask thou would watch over and help us all that we might have clear minds and be able to do the deliberations and considerations in an appropriate manner. And we pray for this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, Tim, thank you, Boyd. Hope that wasn't too confusing. I know we've done it the other way forever, so it's a little bit different. But it seemed to be a good reason, right, Dave?
That's the way it should be.
Okay, so comments and reports, we're gonna start off with public comments. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to come up and address your counsel, come on up, you get two minutes to address. Anyone? Anyone? Nope. So, report from Planning Commission, Madam Chair.
I was thinking back, I feel like I haven't seen you guys in a long time. Like, when's the last time I reported? Okay, I'll start with last, well, the end of February's agenda, and then I'll tell you about what we're doing on a work session front. So the last agenda, we had a public hearing for a potential amendment to the general plan for M1 that would be next to where the Black Pine stuff is on Far West Drive. We had probably thirty or forty people here, and we got a lot of good insight. And the Planning Commission plans to discuss some of the insight in our next work session, next week actually, to see, and then on our agenda it'll be to take action, to move forward in either direction with that. So we, with as much public comment as there was, we needed time to like digest and discuss. So the second item on our agenda was the approval of the site plan for Honey Bucket, located at twenty-nine ninety North, two thousand West. And that was approved without any questions. So that was our agenda, so the one thing you'll see on yours is the Honey Bucket Site Plan Approval. As far as work sessions, we are working on two things right now. We are working on the mixed-use development agreement and specifications for the property behind Petersons, that comes like, I think it's thirteen hundred West and around Petersons. And we're getting closer, we've kinda got the specifications dialed in, and then they're bringing some exhibits, and then we will have a joint session with you guys to make sure before we go through a whole development agreement and public hearing that everyone's on board and questions are all answered. Secondly, we are finishing up the revisions to the C2, which I'm kind of delaying a little just to make sure that whatever happens on some other properties that we're including everything and that maybe we need to start separating and similar to what we talked about in our joint work session last week, you know, playing some of that also, we can do it at the same time. So those are our things. Any questions?
Questions at all? Okay.
And, oh, and assignments, now assignments and direction, I'm just gonna stay up here. I finally learned, okay?
Okay, do we have any new assignments and direction for the Planning Commission at this time?
I think we have one we ought to bring up if we can, and that is I need to get together with you and we need to configure a joint work session.
For?
The Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Housing Committee.
I thought the point was you had a committee, do you need something?
We have a committee, but there are some things, we've already met, we'll report that later. But there are some things we need to work on together, and so you and I can maybe look at seeing when we can find, aside from your regularly scheduled work session, one where we could maybe do something before the second of April.
For the second, okay, that's soon. Okay, and on that note, while I'm thinking about our schedule, so we'll have a work session next week, we did, the mayor and I met with Marriott Sliderville last, or this week. Well, yeah, it was a couple days ago, on Tuesday. And that, we have one more meeting with them, and then we'll have a joint meeting on that as well. So that is going, so that's on our agenda, too. Okay, yeah.
Think about this other one, let's see if we can work out.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Consent items here, consider approval of minutes dated February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I've got two seconds out of that. So we got Katie, and I think I heard Tim first, so Katie and Tim are motioning second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consider approval of bills dated March sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
I've looked over those bills and I moved that we pay the bills.
I have one question. I just saw the cash drawer withdrawal.
The one twenty-five?
So Katie is gonna be telling us the priority while we can be on the chair, so that's me, that's the question.
Okay, thank you.
I saw that too, Katie.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dave, we have an explanation for an answer to a question. Do I have a second?
No second.
Okay, just a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, business items, consider approval of business licenses. Gonna start it off with DMP Storage LLC, do we have a representative from? Come on up and explain, enlighten us.
Dave LaLolli, Plain City, Utah, twenty-two seventy-three North, twenty-eight twenty-five West. Yep, we are just gonna continue operations as tri-city storage, and not much difference going on there.
So no changes or anything, just taking over?
Just taking over.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
The one thing I just wanted to clear up is that the business addressed on the license should be twenty-one, twenty-two, not, the twenty-one, twenty-two West, eighteen fifty North, not the Marriott Sliderville address.
Oh, does it say Marriott Sliderville in it? Oh, yeah, that is correct. You're talking about the actual location?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
It's not a Marriott.
Just across the canal, isn't it, there?
You can't give you a business license in Marriott Sliderville.
Wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate if you did, though.
Okay, so with that correction, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the business license for, license for DMP Storage LLC.
Yeah, I have a motion.
Well, second.
And a second, Boyd and Tim are motioning second. We'll do this roll call, Tim?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is Pitmaster Supply Company. I was gonna guess of them, just, you know, with the awesome hoodie. So you kinda got a feel for this, tell us what's going on.
So we took a building over at nineteen eighty North, two thousand West, so we are a barbecue supply store, so just selling stuff to make barbecue at home, seasoning, sauces, we sell grills.
You're in those commercial buildings there, the brick buildings, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just moving into one of the suites.
Yep. The one on the south end, suite number two, right in the middle, so.
So you're supplying, not cooking?
Nope, just supplies.
You're not manufacturing any grills or?
No, no, it's basically buying from, you know, wholesale and then retailing it, so.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
I didn't have you.
Thank you.
Don't have them yet.
I made a motion. I made a motion to approve Pitmaster Supply Company.
Okay.
Second.
Boyd and Katie, our motion and second. I'm gonna go the other way, Bob?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, welcome to Far West.
Welcome to Far West.
Welcome back to Far, you were kind of already in Far West, weren't you?
Yeah, it was awkward, we called ourselves Far West 'cause where we were, we were technically Ogden, but our property line was Far West, so it was just easier to kinda explain it that way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well now, now you know you're here, and welcome.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, next item, consider approval of the Northwest Cascade, also known as Honey Bucket Site Plan, located at twenty-nine ninety North, two thousand West. There's the applicant, you wanna, you wanna explain anything or answer any questions?
I'll answer any question, I don't have any, but.
Okay.
I do have a question, do you have any?
I hear you speak up, sure.
Do you have, or will this facility have any additive effluent going into?
I can't hear what he's saying.
How do you clean out? How do you clean out your honey buckets?
We clean, first of all, we clean out the truck, the toilets with vacuum trucks. The toilets are pumped before they're moved, we'll not be storing any toilets at the site that have sewage in them. Basically, we're building a building to put the, park the trucks in during the winter because they have, carry fresh water and they freeze. Other than that, we'll use it as a staging area for special events and storing fences and toilets and steel containers, primarily staging area for six trucks, seven trucks.
So there's never actually any sewage on the site?
No, we'll not be storing any sewage on site.
That answered my question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any motions?
My motion that we approve Northwest Cascade, also known as Honey Bucket Site Plan, located at twenty-nine ninety North and two thousand West.
Well, second.
Okay, I'm gonna let Dave tab this one as the second. So, we have motion second, Tim?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
It's unanimous, congratulations. Yeah, your name is?
Sir?
Could you come up and tell her your name?
Oh, excuse me.
I just need your name.
Mark Perry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I should've asked that right up front. Okay. Next one thing, a report on assignments, I'm gonna start with Tim.
I don't really have a whole lot except for, let me just give you an update on one of the bills that was passed. Senate Bill one eighty-five, talking about residential building inspections. That was a big concern, it was opposed by the, opposed by the majority of the city officials and the League of Cities and Towns. But what this bill does now is it provides that if a city does not provide building inspection within three days, an applicant may engage a third-party inspection firm. It authorizes a person seeking a building permit to hire that third-party inspection firm to perform the inspection on the person's property at the local regulator's expense, Far West City being the local regulator. We would have to be required to pay for this building inspection that was provided by a third party. But it does establish some processes and standards that govern the local regulator's payment, so that we don't pay for things that are not really legitimate inspection charges. It exempts a local regulator from liability for any inspection performed by a third-party inspection firm. In other words, if this third-party inspection inspects a building, something happens, say that there's an accident or a defect in the building that causes a problem, the city will not be held responsible for that, the third-party inspector will be, which is a good part. For our class of cities, let's see, third-party inspection firm list. They provide a list, those lists are approved by the regulating bodies, which are the cities. After submitting a request for inspection, a building permit applicant may engage a third-party inspection firm from that list, and it has to be approved by the local regulator or the city, in other words. See if there's anything real. I think that pretty much covers it. It's, it's not an ideal situation to allow, you know, a builder to hire his own inspection firm, but the fact that our city now has the ability to approve who those inspection firms on the list are gives us a little more control than what the bill originally wanted, so that these firms know who's paying the bill, the city, and that we either approve or disapprove of that particular firm being in the list. That was, I think, some of the fine things that they had to agree to before they got enough votes to approve that particular bill. There's some others that, that kinda went the way they were supposed to, opposed and not opposed, but it's not something I think we need to spend a lot of time on. That pretty much is all I have from my end.
Okay, thank you, Tim, Katie?
I'll start out with the exciting news. We were approved for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for our ramp grant for Mountain View Park, the playground replacement there. So we will be working, and it was officially voted on by the county commission, and so we will be receiving ramp funding for that park and the improvements there, which is really exciting.
That was our ask, wasn't it?
Oh, we asked for a hundred and seventy-nine, but.
Okay, I was thinking of this, okay.
One seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight, four twelve.
But, in that same vein, Lyle and I did a lot of, did a lot of late afternoon number crunching spreadsheet doing and got a, another grant submitted to the Utah Outdoor Recreation for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. It's a federal grant, and with that grant, we've kind of buffered that thousand dollars that we didn't get, plus some extra contingency funding, and so that has been submitted, it's called a pre-grant, that you submit to the state, and they'll go through and evaluate it and recommend, that it recommend or not, that it be passed on to the National Park Service, which is the federal body that oversees those funds. And so that is our match to, that grant is our match to the ramp grant funding that we got. And so hopefully, fingers crossed, that that comes through, and, and then there's one other small grant that we'll be going after from the Rocky Mountain Power Foundation for additional five thousand dollars for that playground. So things are moving in a good direction there. Parks Committee, we met this Monday, and Lyle gave us an update on the ADA Doc, and things are rolling again with the design of that, and hopefully that that will be soon to be manufactured, and they'll take it out there and start assembling it and putting it together at Smith Family Park. Also, Fishing Club will be starting April, registration will be opening soon. But, um, last Saturday in April, but.
Twenty-seven.
Fishing Club starting up again, and then we did some discussion and planning for the library property on twenty-seven hundred North. Kind of just try to sketch out some ideas of what we'd like to see there. Easter egg hunt is March thirtieth, correct, Andrea? March thirtieth at Mountain View Park. And then we also have a Freedom Festival Planning Meeting next week, March twelfth, at three P.M. And then a couple of board meetings coming up next week, the Mosquito Board and Communities That Care.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Boyd?
Okay, don't have much, just wanted to let everyone know that the Fire Department Safety Brigade is out doing shows at schools, and they're, 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 they've done Uinta, West Weber, Canesville, they do Valley tomorrow, Valley of Entry in Eden, Freedom Elementary in Hooper is the thirteenth, Far West Elementary is the fifteenth at two o'clock, no, nine o'clock in the morning. And then Silver Ridge is the twenty-second at one-thirty. So anybody that wants to attend those, they're great shows, they're, they're, they're doing a lot of effort to teach these kids fire safety, so be aware of that if you want to attend those. Our board meeting is next Tuesday, so I have nothing to report from that, so, there we go.
Did you say the fifteenth at Far West?
Fifteenth at Far West.
That's March fifteenth, right?
March fifteenth at nine A.M.
Thank you.
All this military time, Kylie, I don't, I don't understand it, so I have to, oh, nine hundred, thirteen thirty, you know, it's, one thirty, I, I know, it's.
You can do math, come on.
I have to think through it, but, I told you one thirty, so.
Is that it?
That's it, that's it.
Okay, oh, and by the way, thank you for covering for me two weeks ago when I was wherever the hell I was.
We, we tried to cover, but apparently we didn't get sound, so, and then I tried to listen in on the work session for the sun far west, I mean, I, no sound. It was such a great meeting, I just feel bad that it wasn't, you know.
You have no record of it, so it didn't happen.
It didn't happen.
It looked good.
It looked good, it looked really good.
Okay, Dave, what do you got for us?
Just this little bit, we mentioned some of this to Geneva during her report. Our Far West Housing Committee met this last Tuesday here at three o'clock in the afternoon. All of the members were present except Greg Baptist, and we weren't able to get the message to him. I've since got some more information from him, we'll keep him in the loop now. And we've talked about the strategies regarding moderate-income housing, and last year's report from the city, we sent in, well, somebody did, I wasn't here for that part. They submitted five proposals, three of which were accepted, two were rejected, and we want to try to take a look at what we can do to further develop those other two and maintain the ones that we've got, so that this year we find ourselves further ahead, not further behind, on what the state's requiring from the city with regards to moderate-income housing. We talked a lot about ADUs, and there may need to be some modifications to the code. That's part of the reason, Geneva, we want to meet with the Planning Commission. This is something we need to do jointly with each other as we move this along. We have until, did we say August? To submit this year's proposal, and we'd like to really get this all cleaned up so that what we send to them next time is acceptable. My understanding that last year we only needed to get three, which we did, but those are gonna require additional attention, or we could watch what we already have evaporate, we don't want to do that. And so I need to visit with you, we've scheduled another meeting for the Housing Committee on the second of April, that's a Tuesday again, at three o'clock, and our feeling was we needed to meet with you in the meantime, so that we could come back and continue to, to work on these issues a little bit. And so that's kind of where we are with that. And other than that, I don't have anything else, Mayor, unless I've left something out of that whole thing that we need to, Nate was there, Tim was there, Mayor was there, I was there, Lou Best was there, and Rob Spronk was there. So we had six of our seven members, like I said, Greg Baptist, we were not able to communicate with him. That won't be a problem anymore, I visited with him for a minute tonight, okay? So that's where we are.
Okay, that it, Dave?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Bob, what do you got for us?
I have a couple things, mostly small, one medium. Cert, I've been trying to assimilate from Boyd some of his meetings that he's been attending or has attended in the past and some of the contacts that he's made. So that is still transitioning the processes. Yeah, so I'm gonna start attending the things that he used to attend. I received the formal request from the Cert Committee for funding. I need to share it with you, with the City Council. We can probably pair some of it out, but that's a group decision, not.
In our budget.
In our budget session. Discussions, yeah.
Yes, so there will be an assert input for the budget. Sewer Board, there wasn't much, we met, it was a fairly short meeting. Nothing that really impacts our, our city. There are some future logistics things that they're trying to work out, like how to clean out the old bed, replace it, the percolation bed, replace it with more asphalt, new asphalt that isn't crumbling, et cetera. So there wasn't much. Transportation, I did attend the Board of Trustees Meeting telephonically. I gave you the, the notes, basically talking about what is going to go on in the region. And the only thing that really came close to us was the four hundred off-ramp northbound is going to be converted into a two-lane left turn. The 400, um, off-ramp northbound is going to be converted into a two lane left turn. Because of known growth and known, uh, requirements. Otherwise, the next Transportation Board Meeting is coming up this next week. So there will be more in the next meeting. Um, the main thing that I have tonight is roads. I met with Dave Bunderson and Nate Carver and we looked at maps of. Things that are ongoing, things that are going to need to be resolved as far as replenishment, refurbishment. Um, and it comes down to finances. And we're looking at the budget and we're seeing that we're probably going to be pushing our limits with budget. Inputs that we're receiving today. We kind of talked about the tough. Um, perhaps a, a potential. New source of funding, but that again is going to have to come up in the Budget Committee and. We're going to have to seriously think about how we're going to. Increase our budget to meet our demands, uh, for next year and into the future. Based on what. They are seeing with our road conditions and things that will need to be addressed and the things that are unknown. Because we haven't made it through winter yet and there are some damages that are occurring because of weather. Um, so. Um, Dave and Nate are here to, to talk if we need them to about. How we want to handle the future. But it's really going to need to come up in the Budget Meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, even though I've only been back for a couple of weeks, I, I, I got to do a whole lot of fun stuff over, since I got back. So first thing I did was I went to Wasatch Front Regional Council New Member Orientation. Because apparently I'm on a committee there now, Regional Growth. Committee. I'm an alternate member, but I still get to go and participate, so I got to learn all about that. Um. I also, when I got back and I, we went on some, uh, WFRC, um, site visits for some of the grants that we've put in for, so. For roundabouts and 3300 and those kinds of things. So came back just in time to see those. We'll see where, where those come out in, um. You know, priorities with Wasatch Front Regional Council. Um, also having to do with transportation on WACOG, the Subcommittee. Uh, we introduced our new members and lucky me, I was appointed the Chair. So I'm now the Chair of the WACOG Subcommittee for Transportation. And, um, Jim Harvey is the Vice Chair. He was the one that nominated me, even though I didn't even raise my hand. But that's okay. I don't mind stepping up. But we did review local funds program. There's about 14.6 million that is going to be available for the next year. Um, we also reviewed the timeline. The timeline for the WACOG Local Transportation Funds. So any projects that we may have that we want to ask WACOG for local funds for, for future projects, this is for, I believe. Programming for, um. I think it's 2029 or 2030. So this is obviously futuristic. Um, we need to have letters of intent in by May 6th. They've up, they've brought that, moved that forward. It used to be the first part of June. But they, what they wanted to do is give enough time in between the 1st of June and the 1st of July. When the concept reports are due, to allow communities and engineers and all that to get all their stuff together. Uh, you know, in order to propose the needs and all that kind of good stuff. And then the rest of the, um, timeline is the same. So the Subcommittee reviews them in August, September. WACOG looks at them in October, November timeframe and the Commission approves them sometime in December. We've gotten some of these funds in the past for some of our future road projects, so. Um. We'll be all over that. Glad to be a part of that. Um. Looked over there. And we also recommended approval of the, recommended to the WACOG. Roy amended their, a request for a roundabout that they've got. If they requested 1.1 additional. 1.1 million additional dollars for a certain roundabout that they're working on out there. And that was actually approved by the WACOG Council in the following meeting after that, so. Um, kind of goes to show, if you can get it recommended and approved on a list. The pretty good chance that you can, uh, request some more. For what it's worth. Uh, it, during WACOG itself, we, uh. As Katie already talked about, we, the ramp recommendations that were ultimately approved by the Commission, we got our 1 point, or 178,000 for 12. And. That was pretty much it as far as the, the ramp stuff. Let me quickly, uh, move over to the rest of the agenda. The, uh, we had a Hill Air Force update, so if you look up in the air over the next two weeks, they have this thing called. Adversary air going on. Apparently they have some planes coming in that are. Not of our type, that they're training with. So if you see weird things in the sky, it's on purpose. Adversary air. Um, so they'll be training for the next two weeks, I guess only one more week. And of course, there is an airshow at the end of June. They're expecting over 700,000 people. So. That, that'll be exciting. Of course, they invite everybody to come. The, uh, YCC came in and gave a presentation. There's quite a bit of increase in, uh. Needs there at the YCC. They're actually starting to ask for some funding, something else we'll have to probably discuss during budget season. They're asking at least from Far West City, based on population and whatnot, approximately, uh, $4,400. For, you know. Our portion of that. So based on some math that they do. There's also some noxious weed training going on. I believe our Public Works are all signed up and ready to do that. They're going to do some training on that in order to make sure that. Uh, they're killing things with, because apparently if you use too much Roundup. Weeds just ignore it and start growing anyway, so they have other means to get to it, so they go through all of that. We then had a presentation by, I think I talked about Cunertie before. It's a, a manufacturer that's on 12th Street. They have these, uh. Generators that run off of methane. They actually, as methane comes out of the ground, they destroy methane and they're able to generate electricity. I call it Mad Max Beyond Thunderdome because it reminds me of. How they generated their electricity. I think we all know what that is. No, that's exactly what it is. And what they're doing, and they've actually got one of these in place, they put it out at the landfill. The old Weber County landfill, it's now a closed landfill. There, it's already emitting methane, so they're just capturing it and destroying it and generating electricity from it, so. And they were, they're basically interested in anybody else who has a closed landfill, they're willing to take one of those things out and. Plug it into that methane. We don't have a landfill that we know of. And, uh, so we won't be tapping. It's not a landfill. But not with enough methane. They would, if we really wanted them to test for it, they could. For what, for what it's worth. But anyway, I, I found that pretty interesting, but it's a local, uh, thing. They, it's. Anyway, generators, good stuff. Uh, Sheriff Arbonne did a, a presentation on the jail expansion. Uh, they're still going to, uh, oh, oh, for, um. Thirty to 40, 35 to 40% of what the bond was in order, they still need, they have needs, they still need to increase their capacity. And that's going to be between 35 and 30 million to do.
How are they going to go after it this time?
I don't know. You'll have to ask Sheriff Arbonne about that, but he said these are the monies that don't be, now, they're probably going to request it of the county and you know where that goes. We're in the county. Uh, the last thing was the, uh, Winter Overflow Presentation by Commissioner Bollos. Uh, having to do with Code Blue and those types of things. So when there's homeless. Um, under what conditions and where are they going to put people, capacity, uh, all of those kinds of things. So. There's going to be a task force put together so they can start addressing things for next year, because we're kind of. Inching out of the harsh winter season as it is for us right now. Well, Code Blue has to do with a certain temperature. I, it could be. Okay, uh, Code Enforcement. I've talked with Iris and Alan. Uh, they're addressing complaints and also. Uh, I, because I sent them a, a couple of things and they are looking through all of our ordinances and come to find out, because one of the complaints was. Uh, somebody's living in somebody's camper in somebody's backyard. Well, I guess there's several of those. Come to find out, we have no ordinance that does not allow people living in campers in backyards. So maybe Liam, we need to have a discussion about that, because you know how Iris is, she's very thorough. She couldn't find anything. That they were in violation of. No. I don't think it can, it's not in the. Bunch of comedians.
Mobile Dwelling Unit.
Okay, send them to Walmart. Still, still my report here, folks. Okay, Bonavista, there was no meeting. Uh, as, uh, Geneva mentioned, we met with Mary Slater Vale about Black Pine, uh, proposal. We'll be meeting on Tuesday. And then we'll be, uh, meeting further. I'm meeting tomorrow, going with Roberta. Is it Dave's dog and me, to go to Weber Human Services about senior extension.
I was glad to go if they'd have just put cancel on the thing every other day.
Well, apparently what happened was somebody not officially them sent out a notice accidentally and then. Cancelled it and a lot of people thought that was a cancellation of.
It looked like a cancellation.
It was of the one that was sent erroneously. Anyway, it's okay. Just giving you grief back. I also met with Chris, Chris Wielstein of Bike Utah. Um, they're working on updating our active transportation plan. Um, we're going to have a few more meetings. We're going to be doing some, uh. Community outreach and those types of things. They're doing it for free, so of course I'll never turn away free. This does involve, and I did have, uh. Lou Best involved with that and also, uh, active transportation. It was just kind of put together and. You were unable to attend, right, because of the time? But, uh, we'll get that together and we'll, uh, continue with that. Um. We, and, so here's a comment I want to make. Uh, should we use, so Food Truck Night is back. Starting April 3rd at the Smith Family Park. Talked with Katie a little bit and, um, this is an opportunity perhaps to use Food Truck Night as some of our community outreach. So when we're doing things, updates to the general plan, getting input on housing, getting, you know. Things about parks or whatever, why not have something out there while people are, are eating? That might actually attract people to the Food Truck Night as well. But it's an opportunity when people.
Great idea. I, I, I like it because I think, you know, they can go, they can interact, they can get, I, I think that's.
Yeah, they can be chewing on a hot dog and reading whatever it is we have.
How would that identify us or how would we identify ourselves?
We'd set something up and. You'd wear your shirt.
Almost like an open house. We can have the open houses at the Food Truck Night.
Yes.
I think it may be a good opportunity and hopefully maybe it will time well is, um, you know, maybe we could use this as an opportunity to get some input on the development behind Peterson.
Yeah, yeah. All, all, all of the things we want public input on, this is just other ways to get things out. Along with public hearings and open houses and all that. It's just one more mechanism. And then, uh, and kind of along those lines, uh, so Freedom Festival. Some of you know about the Dunk Tank and others are going to find out. We have a Dunk Tank. It's the mayor's Dunk Tank. We use that to fu, raise funds for things like, uh, well, we rave things for umbrellas at senior, uh. Places and we also did it for the park. We could do it for the park again, but I basically want to invite and encourage. Oh, the council to want to get dunked. Katie, Katie is in and I'm in.
That'll handle it.
I'm not coming off anything that I don't have to. You know, I just, I'm just saying.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you, you got out of it last year. Don't do that again. How's that?
I know, I know, but I'm not sure I'm on a.
No. Be appreciated if you can participate and are willing to figure. It's always for a good cause. Any, anytime we can raise some funds.
I haven't been able to do it, but I did participate financially, so there.
Yes, you did. I, I still have a video of you trying to dunk me.
Yeah, okay.
He picked up no less than five balls, throwing them at that thing and missed.
Not last year, the, the year before.
It was good. Okay, and, uh. Yes, one last thing. Not one last thing, but the Midyear Conference, I think I sent out a notice to everybody. If anyone is interested, let Andrea know. She will get you registered. You will have to get your own watching.
So isn't that, isn't that on a City Council night?
It, it, it is. So the more of us that go, the less chance we're going to have a City Council meeting that night.
We need to make that decision soon.
Yes. That's towards mid-April, second meeting in April. So if you want to go. So Katie's going, I'm going. For sure. And, uh, anyone else who would like to go. They usually do a really good job at the Midyear Conference of. Going through like everything they, they've done at the Legislature. And putting it into English and explaining it. That's the, one of the best things that I get out of it, plus barbecue. So. That is my assignments. Any questions on any of my assignments or any go-backs on anybody else's? Okay, the next item on the agenda is consider going into a closed session to discuss purchasing property. So, uh, what we're going to, if we choose to do this, we're going to go into a closed session to discuss property. Of course. Closed meetings means that everybody leaves except for the, those that are asked to stay, which are Public Works, our attorney. And, um, those taking minutes and the council. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we enter into closed session to discuss the purchase of property.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Katie and Tim are motion second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, we are going into a closed session now, let's.
Is there four out of five of us?
Was there any opposed?
I'm just checking.
Hey, should I have broke all that?
I just wanted, I just wanted Liam to know that I, I listened tonight.
Is the one that's really interested in the post office box? I don't know if we have any update?
Um, we don't. And, oh yes, and I was going to announce the end of the stream on YouTube. So, see you folks out there. So i- into the, in the closed session.